All right, let's call to order on roll call. Mr. Eyre.
Here.
Mr. Bartlett.
Here.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Van Stone.
Here.
Mr. York.
It's here.
Now, before we formally get started into this budgeting part of it, Mr. York is going to...
Well, I'm going to defer to Liz Matthews, the treasurer of the Marymount Legacy Foundation.
Okay.
To come up.
Why are we not doing this?
So, this check represents the money that the Marymount Legacy Foundation donated to the village in 2004. A big part of it includes the pool campaign. I know Matt had a big, Eyre had a big part to do with that. Paula Eyre had a big part to do with that. Alicia Stock, Mandy, oh, sorry, Terry Donovan.
Becca.
Rebecca.
Why do you have tissues?
Highly involved. So, that was a big part of this check. We also...
Do I need a tissue?
From Spittle River Builders donated money for the lighting in the island. We also had Mike Pardo and the group at the National Examiner, including the Pedri family paid entirely for the renovation of the clock tower in front of the inn. And we also had a donation from the Hacking Foundation. And that money has gone towards a third-party consultant that's going to look into fundraising and implementation of pickleball courts in Marymount. So, that is the net-net of this. So, if you guys would like to come up.
Yeah, let's get some pictures.
I work here, you guys do it. I don't need to.
I'm sorry, so I want to introduce the other members of Legacy Foundation. Obviously, this is our treasurer. Brad Westfall is our secretary, he's out. Steve Lewis is involved in Marie Hahnfeld. So, it's a small group. I thought, well, I got a late scratch from Marie.
And then I also want to give a shout-out to Jim Gore and Thor Investment Management. So, we worked with them to create a Charles Swab account so we can accept securities. We had never been able to do that before. And when I went on, they wanted $100,000 net asset value to start it. So, they were able to do all that. So, that's made a nice difference for us.
And we're earning.
And we're earning copious interest.
Well, Bill is contagious.
Pan-arrange this.
Yeah, Bill's germy. Why are you doing that, man?
Let's do this, too.
There you go.
All right, one more.
Come out.
Get one, too.
My board.
Did you get our meetings?
Did you get my inside?
They don't trust you.
Well, that's probably a good call. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, on behalf of the village, I know I didn't speak up during all the excitement, but on behalf of the village, I would like to obviously thank Randy for basically organizing, starting this. He probably put in a, I mean, he had help, he had volunteers, I'll give you that. But he had a tremendous effort, time, everything else that he put into this to basically make a check like that possible and to make some of the projects that we're hoping to undertake possible. So, for that, thank you.
Thank you. I think it's testament to the resources and care in this village. And there's more to come.
Amen, amen. All right, Ms. Rankin, are you going to walk us through this?
So, everybody's got the form for the budget meeting, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So, basically, the exercise here is that we took what our carryover balances would be for both the permanent improvement fund and added what our estimated revenue for 2025 will be, backed out our tax collection fees, as you see on that line. Basically, what we're showing is what's available after the tax collection fees are deducted. And as the exercise, I believe, had gone through over the course of the year to determine where funds should be expended, it's put together this sheet with what the proposals were to spend on. So, as you can see, the first line being the $72,000 for a police car. And to note that there are car computers that will be needed. And Chief has indicated that they'll be paid out of the other fund, 2271. So, the point is that money won't be available to spend on the cars themselves. And then the cardiac monitors, which are required for the fire and EMS department, also coming out of the permanent improvement limited. So, out of the permanent improvement account, the discussion was that I can read each number or you can look at it, just look at it. Joni Sanz, just look at it. So, you know, these are the amounts that were allocated for the conversations over the course of the year. And fortunately, all of them, you know, we can do because we have enough money available and leaving us with the balance that we're shooting for at the end of the year. So, that being said, conversations, questions, discussion?
It's hard to have an argument here, we can do everything.
We can do everything. This is like in the past where we put everything on it and gone like, can't do that, can't do that, won't do that, which was a time-consuming part of the meeting. I mean...
Kelly, just on the, kind of the nuts and bolts of how this is all going to work.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, my, I have a keen interest in the pool project.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand what the 84,000 is, and that's the village share. And the rest is coming from private funds. But my, so my question is, is we have funds left over from '24 that are going to carry over into that project into '25 because we have these contractor POs and they didn't do all the work in '24. So, that money's going to carry over. Plus, we have additional private money that's not in yet, that has to come, that hasn't been sent to the village yet. And in a couple cases, we're still waiting to close those donations. So, that's going to be coming to the foundation and to the village and go into this fund. So, what I want to make sure is, is that you have the appropriations for the whole pool project, which is basically 84 times three, with some of it, with all but the 84 coming from private funds. So, what we're doing today is we're allocating this 84, but I just want to make sure that that other stuff is carrying forward and that we've appro, that we don't get into a spot where we say, oh, well, we haven't appropriated that money yet when it comes time to spend the rest on the rest of the project.
You're talking about appropriating the donations that have been come in so far, correct?
The ones that have already come in and the ones that are yet to come in.
Right.
And the money that's, and the money, yeah, and I just want to make sure that we don't have to go through appropriate, if possible, that we don't have to go through appropriations process.
We don't.
All right, so the 161-ish that was donated from the lake, from you guys, so that wasn't all spent. So, all that carries over to 2025.
That's correct.
We don't do anything with that.
Correct.
So, Kelly created a separate fund.
Right, right, right.
Then it's got the cash balance as of, I don't know, December the 12th was like 140,850. So, that's the money that's been already, it's actually in its own fund instead of...
Right, right, yeah. That fund is...
And that sounds about right.
Yeah, mm-hmm. And then when we get the rest of the donations and it comes in, we don't have to do any other, we don't have to do anything else tonight?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure of that.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm assuming, Kelly, when the time comes, you'll just transfer money from the, the village's share will come out of, you'll transfer funds.
Correct.
Right out of the permanent improvement fund all to the Swaying Pool Project Fund 49.
I'll actually put it in the fund.
Yeah, yeah, transfer it into that.
Any fund, any money that comes in specific for the pool will go into its own fund. That's why I created that fund.
Mm-hmm.
So, in and out, same with the Dogwood Fund. Anything that goes in and out is for that project. Does that answer the question, Matt?
Oh, I've got. I've got a couple more. Bob, the LED lights number, the 22, is that to finish it?
Yes.
So, and that's, that's an important point. We weren't talking about...
That's my estimate. We have 55 to go. If we use last year's estimate, it would be 20.7. However, I think the globes for the, whatever we want to call it, the pendant lights or whatever, the goosnecks, may be a little more expensive. So, I jacked the 20.7 up to 22, which I think should cover it.
I just want to make sure I understood it. And that's fantastic that we're speeding things up and just getting her done. I like that.
God, there were going to be 10 left for 26. And I just, it wasn't worth it.
Okay, and then my last item is when we went through our priorities and whether it was the village council or whether it was the village staff, everyone's number-one priority was finishing, that was doing the concourse project. Now, since that time, we've learned that we have more repairs to do than what we originally thought when we developed that budget, was, which was essentially for lumber and just a few other tools and supplies. So, given that, I believe the community is very, is, it's looking to get that project finished in 2025. And we have a bunch of masonry work to do that we don't have in this budget. So, with it being our unanimous number-one project, I think we need to, I think we need to borrow from somebody to pay for our number-one priority project.
Well, I guess, so the thing is also, Matt, you know, we did spend $12,524.
Right.
So, and now we've built in $39,000. And I think Kelly went to Bill to say, what do you think is, how much we need to build in, including the tuck?
Well, the tuck pointing is done, so it'll be, or I'm sorry, the cleaning is done, but it's the tuck pointing and any repairs, correct, Bill? Ask Bill, yes, no questions, please.
As I, as I was trying to explain, if there is the 39 that's left, that would be more than enough to buy all of the lumber to finish the west wing and the teeny bit that's left on, or, I mean, the east wing and the teeny bit that's left on the west wing. And additionally, then, to start the point and tuck work on both wings. But I don't have, I don't have a good, hard estimate. I mean, you know, I talked to McCarron. I mean, it's going to be a long, it's going to be a process, going to take time, kind of a thing. So, clearly, this spring, I want to get him started on the west, western wing, kind of a thing. Now, if you want to somehow speed the project up, that's...
Well, when we had our original budget, that we, that included the center, that, which...
Well, the, out of the 39, I mean, if I'm not paying for any point and tuck work there, yeah, that 39 would buy all of the wood for the remainder of the project, yes.
Correct. So, so we're coming up maybe, I'm just going to throw a number out there, I'm going to say $40,000 we might spend on masonry in addition to the lumber. And it's our number-one priority project, and I think we should appropriate it.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you want the option, that could be the number. I'm just saying, for 2025, it wouldn't be necessary to move money around. I can get both wings done, wood-wise, and probably the point and tuck work in '25. And then, of course, in '26, do the, do the center section. But if you want to speed it up, yeah, then we're talking about additional money.
Is it practical, though? Just, I mean, I don't know, it's a nice thought to have it all be done in 2025, but is that practical?
I'm not sure it's practical, but it's possible. I mean, you know, it involves, you know, more work and more helpers and so on and so forth.
And to Matt, to your other point, from Kelly's sheet here, the target for that permanent improvement all fund is to maintain at least 200,000. She's got remaining of 232. So, there is money available.
Right.
If we need it to, if we get more work done. We don't have to sit there and cut from somebody else unless you're going to, unless 39 and you want to add another 40 on top of the 39.
To smith.
Then all of a sudden, you're going to be over.
And I, and I recommend we do that so we get this, I think people are, people want that concourse project done.
Mm-hmm. The question I have is, based on Rob's comment, we have 32 left there. When we get the bid in, then we could transfer money.
Or...
Or appropriate it.
Yeah, appropriate more money or whatever, yeah.
But I, without a bid, it's hard, or an estimate, it's sort of hard-pressed for me to say we should add X dollars to that. I, I like the goal, and I think if we got a bid from McCarron that said it's going to be 28, I'm making a number up, at least from what I hear right now, that would be, we could appropriate it once we get that bid or a better estimate.
That being said, if we have the money now, I would rather we appropriate it now because every time we have to appropriate something else, we have to do legislation and a supplemental appropriation, and then it has to go to Hamilton County, and they have to approve it and they have to send it back to us. So, I, I think it'd be safer to appro, if we, again, we have it, let's do an additional appropriation. I mean, is 10 realistic to do 49 instead of 39? How much are you talking, do you think? 50, 60?
The first question is, how much is the wood, right? Because then you're going to say, okay, now what's left?
Right.
So, do you have an idea?
So, Bill, are you 39 for all the wood?
Well, 30...
And incremental 39,000?
No, 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 39 was, no, 39 was for more than just the wood. Let's, let him ask, answer the question, how much for the wood?
You see, the problem is, we spent way less on the wood than we anticipated spending. But then again, we sort of lost track of the wood in terms, because we paid for all of the power washing, I think, out of the wood bill, did we not? Yeah, so...
Well, I mean, the purchase order was issued for the project, so...
For the project, no, I know. And then there was a couple of hand tools and things like that, and beds and so on and so forth that had to be bought. But to finish the job, to finish the east wing and the center section, I mean, I would anticipate, you know, to be, you know, a little bit on the positive side here, that couldn't possibly be more than, say, $25,000 worth of wood.
Okay.
And then...
Wood.
Mm-hmm.
But then, in order to finish that center section, which is a little different than the wings, if you want me to finish it just in '25, then I may have to, you know, I may have to hire some helpers. I can't take our helpers for that length of time away from their normal job.
Mm-hmm. So, you're saying there's sort of a capacity issue as well involved here?
With volunteers and helpers, there's a capacity issue, very, that's a very good way to put it. And I must say, and I want to say it right here and now, the volunteers that have helped me, I set a shop up, y'all know this, down at the maintenance facility, I had little workshops down there on Saturdays, guys came in, we helped, we really cranked out some of the remaining pieces. So, all of that was good, and I anticipate that continuing into the coming year. They will help me finish out the eastern wing. And then, you know, if I can, if I can reasonably have that done early summer, then I'm starting on the center section, yeah. I mean, I want to get it done as well as anybody else does.
Do any of these numbers take into account regrading it? Regrading the concourse, you know, because it sits there with, water sits there.
Well, but no, the regrading and landscaping, that...
It's just pergola, right?
Yeah, it was just, yeah.
So, that's an additional expense that'll be incurred in 2026?
Well, whenever we would be doing it.
That's the...
Sure.
We're trying to get the park board back moving, and we've had a couple of meetings. And it also is the number-one of a group of 13 of us. And I know that that is the number-one priority that the new park group has set as well. So, I think there will be a lot of energy and a lot of volunteer to try and get to work with you.
Okay.
And to develop the whole plan to finish that.
Okay.
So, having said that, I just add that only because there will be another group that's wanting to push to help get that project done.
Well, that could be, that could be very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially in the, you know, demolition part of it, you know, kind of a thing.
Let me, let me tell you what I thought I just heard, because it's a lot of them. You have 39 right here, you think you'll need 25 for the wood.
For what?
For the wood.
For the wood. So, that would leave us 14. And if we appropriated an extra 20 for that project, that should handle any of the pointing we need.
We think 59 is good. It's a lot of money.
What does that leave for the point work?
Well, this is...
19 and 20, that's...
40, 39?
So, I'm sorry, 49 instead of 39? Is that what you just said?
I said 39, did somebody say 49? Did I add it wrong?
No, I think Bob was just, he was breaking it into two pieces, right, Bob?
I was going to just increase this, we'll put it all under the pergola. You know, there's wood and tuck pointing in the same number, in the same line.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Well, that's what it is now. That's what the 39 is.
That's what I'm saying, but it sounds to me like there's 19 extra. Bill thinks he'll beat this number by about, you said 25?
But don't talk about beating it because, again, it includes the tuck work.
I understand, but there'd be 14 in there, tuck pointing.
He wasn't going to beat it once we talked the center.
Well, no, I...
The wood, the wood's included.
Yeah.
I said 25, I said about 25,000 to finish the east wing and the center.
In wood?
In wood only, yes.
And so, there's 14, the wood plus 14 for tuck pointing in this number right now. And my comment was, if we add another 20K in there, so it'll get us up to, doing my head, 35K for tuck pointing, that seems to be on the right order.
Guys, I hate to be pinned down to what that tuck pointing is going to be.
I understand.
My last conversation with McCarron basically was, as he, you know, was walking and looking at the job, and I'm sorry about this voice, it's a way bigger job than meets the eye from just sort of standing there looking at it. So, a job like this, I mean, you know, we're sitting here trying to make estimates of, you know, 25 to 35,000. Hell, it could go, this could turn out to be 50 grand to do this.
But that's, that's, I'm trying to comply with what the spirit of what Kelly was saying.
Sure.
So, I, my, my comment is, we add 20K to that 39, so we bump it up to 59, she'll still have a little bit over the 200K at the bottom. That just seems like a way to go, so the money is there, it's appropriated. And if it turns out that we need more than that, we'll address that when the time comes.
Another possibility, I'm going to throw it out there, would be we kick the parking lot down the road one more year, which is big bucks. 63 plus, we've got, we've got a, kind of a placeholder of 20 for the lighting, that's $83,000, is that, we don't, we wouldn't necessarily need to, we appropriate a healthy amount for the concourse project. And then if we have too much, when we get, you know, McCarron's bid, and who knows, we might even have to get a second bid if we don't like the looks of, of this. If, with money that's remains, Park Board's going to have recommendations, and, you know, we're going to, we know that there's going to be other work at the concourse. And I think we should stick with it being the number-one priority project that everybody seemed to kind of hold on.
I, we, I think we've kicked the can, you're talking about down the road for too long. That parking lot's in atrocious shape. And if we're doing the, anything we're going to do on lighting, and I'd like to get that project done. And I realize that we may have other things to do at the pergola, and it may go beyond '25, but so be it. That's, that's my perspective because this has been, third year we've tried to kick that parking lot down the road.
It's true, but the pergola, we let the pergola get into disrepair for the last 20 years. And that, I mean, it's, it's in desperate need of redoing.
But the point is, is we, the village agreed to let those construction trucks be on that parking lot, and that's what really chewed it up, when the roof was done on the chapel. So, that's the area, the parking lot, that's really ripped up there.
It's true.
So, I'm just saying, you know, it's, and it's, they're also those parking spots closest to the chapel, which probably get used more than a lot of others.
Are we comfortable adding 35,000 for a total of 74? Do we think that's enough? Because we've got 30,000 left over. We've got 5,000 for park benches that we, in my view, we don't need. We have, we have 88 park benches. We don't need any more.
Is this to replace or buy more?
I thought you were replacing some.
I thought this was to replace.
I think, I think it's going to end up cleaning and repairing and moving them around. I'm not sure if we have to replace any.
Okay, because some are not the best, I mean, there's...
Well, we can, we can scavenge, you know, some for parts, yeah.
I think the more that, I think the more that we can put into it, the better. And I think that that's the most visible thing that people are looking for. And Bob, I appreciate that, it would be great to get the parking lot done. And I also think, and I don't know this, but the number that we have in for lighting for that, the amount of extra light we need is minimal, and, and so I think...
For the Old Town Square?
Yeah, I think that there's going to be savings there because even, even though I know running electric is expensive, I was hoping to have kind of a plan for that tonight, but I don't, and it's going to take a little longer, but...
Do you think we should knock that 25 down to 20? Or more?
It's 20 now, isn't it?
Well, it's 25 in total for the lights and the sign.
Right. It's just one line, yeah.
Yeah, let's take 15 out of that and figure out how to, and we're going to get 10K worth of lights, whatever that is.
Okay, so we're taking the whole line down, 15. Right, because that line, the signage and lighting.
Yeah.
So, we're knocking that down to...
They need for five.
The 10.
No, I'm not going to...
There's signage for five.
So, maybe say five for signage and 10 for light?
I don't see the signage as being a high priority, and it wasn't ranked high when we did our ranking. So, I would, so...
Well, I like...
I would take Bob's suggestion and then also take some out of that lighting for the parking lot and put as much in the concourse as we reasonably can.
I like that, or I like, if it was Randy or your idea, I like that because that would give me the latitude if I need to hire some, a carpenter or two, because there's a push-on in August, or, no, whenever, that I, the funds would be available for that.
So, that gives us 80, if we take 10,000 for the lights, that gives us 80 from now.
Let's do it.
Wait.
You said 15.
So, if 10 out of the lights, five still, you want to get rid of the, we can repair the signs, so...
We've already bumped up...
So, add 15?
You've already bumped up the pergola by 20, just from the, from the balance of permanent improvement, okay?
You have 15 more is 35, plus the 39 gets 74.
So, we're, if we're at 39 and we took, I'm talking about taking 30 more for permanent.
No.
Five from park benches.
Don't, don't take it down to the wire.
No, don't, no. We're going to take 20 out of permanent improvement.
All right, so 39 plus 20.
That's 59.
Plus five, plus 15. Is that where we are?
15 plus 20 plus, plus 39 is 74.
So, again, I just want, yes, so the Old Town Square, Matt, Old Town Square signage and lighting is now 10 instead of 25. Is that right? Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Since you're the man on that project?
Well, if this, like I said, if the sign doesn't get done this year, I don't think that's as important as getting the concourse done. We'll, we'll see if we can make it work, but...
Thor, are you still leaving the five? Did you, that include the five for the park benches?
No, we didn't take that out yet.
We didn't take that out.
Okay. We just want to make sure of getting the numbers right.
Good question.
We've only made two, two long changes, as soon as I can tell.
And how much did we take out from the 232?
20.
20.
So, that's 212.
And then the other, we just moved from signs and lighting up to the pergola.
Do you really need that cardiac monitor?
Well, it doesn't work on, it doesn't work...
If we're having a heart attack, yeah, it's kind of nice.
Hey, Matt, it doesn't work on Pocahontas.
It might be kind of vital.
They're having a heart attack, they'll think we need a monitor.
So, 74,000, 74,000.
Yes.
I'll go get a bear and test it. So, Kelly, so 70, like Bob said, like Bob said, 74,000.
74,000, 39.
Yes, sir.
Good.
And the, um, Old Town Square, will you send down a new copy to everybody? Absolutely.
Okay.
Not right now, tomorrow.
I understand.
Sounds good.
Okay, we need motion second, please.
Are we going, are we gonna go through more, or are we all set?
I'm done.
I'm moving to accept that budget, or that. Appropriation.
Anybody with a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Dr. Lewis?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Vanstone?
Aye.
Mr. York?
Aye.
All right.
Excellent.
Looks like we're in. And does that conclude that business? All right. Concludes that meeting?
Okay.
Are we all good? Are we all good? All right, going right into council. Susan, come here. She's gonna be a little late, she's gonna be here. Uh, will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Ayer?
Here.
Mr. Bartlett?
Here.
I know Susan will be here directly. Uh, Dr. Lewis?
I'm here.
Uh, Mr. Vanstone?
Here.
Uh, Mr. York? All right. Okay, any question regarding the November the twenty-fifth minutes? All was good?
Close enough.
Everybody? And a motion and a second to accept?
So moved.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Dr. Lewis?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Vanstone?
Aye.
Mr. York?
Aye.
All right, in communications, I'll be leading off here, chief, with your report. Yes? Any comments, any questions?
If anybody has any questions, I, I don't have anything.
You sure?
How, I almost hate to bring it up.
Yeah, I can do, I can do that.
How about the car break-in thing? Why do we?
Knock on wood, uh, we haven't had any here the last couple of weeks, so I hope it'll stay that way. But it's still happening throughout the tri-state area.
Area, uh-huh.
And I will announce, uh, Mr. Mayor, you and I talked last week, and I have since spoken with everybody in council, and, uh, everybody's in agreement with our agreement last week that I will renew my contract and stay on through the year twenty twenty-seven.
All right, excellent.
Madam.
Yay!
You know, that means a couple more years of panic calls to you on Saturday night when I think I hear gunshots.
That's perfectly fine.
Or people are partying at the concourse.
I'd rather get the call than something be happening, we don't, we don't respond, so thank you, Ms., Dr. Lewis.
All right, you've all seen Ben James's, um, maintenance monthly report. It's kind of short this time, so I guess you have any questions? I, I do know that, um, you know, now that we've laid on the temporary helpers, we've kind of picked up the pace with leaf collection. I know there were several, I'm probably being conservative, there were several residents within the village that were somewhat, um, you know, a little upset about leaf collection. But we are catching up, um, and we will be caught up. And leaf collection will be running through the end of the month. In fact, I mean, sort of given the way leaves have been coming down and so on and so forth, we might actually, you know, go a week or something past that. So, anyway. We're making progress.
Well, Mother Nature certainly isn't helping.
Well.
I would imagine those wet leaves are twice as hard to get up.
Yeah, yeah, the wet leaves make it a little bit more difficult, that's true, that's true. All right, you have Chuck Barlow's monthly, um, report. Looks like we're ahead of the game here in some tax collections through November, I guess. Which is looking good. I don't want to count all that money as being something that might go forward into the future, but it's looking good right now. Any questions regarding that? Chuck's not here tonight, but you guys know where to contact him? All right. Permission to address council? No takers?
No, well, no takers.
No takers, what, come on, somebody, I'm gonna get him talking. Give my voice a chance to rest? All right, then, um, question regarding the bills?
Bill, I had a, um.
Sure.
A thought.
Sure.
So, um, Marcy, thank you for sending the report out from Envision last night, it was helpful to get to read that. I'm, is, email's gonna, is it gonna come and present? Because the presentation says he makes a final, there's a conclusion at the, he makes another presentation. I think it would be great, because there's a lot of good stuff in here that'd be good to talk about.
I agree.
So, is he gonna?
Yeah, I can ask him. I mean, I think he was thinking, because of Susan's request at that April meeting, that we would just go through the committee, but I'm sure he'd be willing to come back. And I think it would be very beneficial, because he just has a font of knowledge to expound upon some of that stuff that I just, you know, I can't grasp all that.
You mean, to present to council? Yeah, because there's a really cool suggestion down here.
I don't know whether we should do it at a regular council meeting, or whether we have a special meeting to council. But, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sure he'd be willing to come back.
Because I just want to make sure, I mean, we have the full bill that we're paying him here, and I didn't know if we would hold back.
No, no, he would, he would more than make an accommodation like that, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, we can't hold back, because we have to pay that.
Yeah, he's already, I know he's, he hasn't billed us yet for any of the work he's done.
No, he does, he has, Allison has a check ready to go.
Yeah, but I think you're saying any progress invoicing he has.
Right, right, he's been kind enough not to invoice us throughout, he's waited to the very end. So, I'm just saying, I mean, so, okay, so he'll, that's great, because I think that'll be important is, again, there's a lot of good stuff in here that I think would be good for us to engage his knowledge base in.
Oh, absolutely.
See what else, what specifically we can go do from this in terms of action steps.
I agree.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, any other questions regarding the bills?
Well, let, just, let me pay the bills off, to ask a question later.
Okay, so no questions regarding the bills?
No.
Well, I got a quick one. So, Kelly, the, I'm sorry, I should have asked you before this, but the.
No, I didn't eat the Halloween candy.
J.K. Muir, so that's, this is before the reimbursement, is that right? There's like a bill for two-hundred and fourteen thousand, so we gotta pay the bill, and then we'll get reimbursed from them?
Trust me.
I know you guys are watching now.
Trust me.
The request to sort has been sent out from Bro and from Pocahontas. I need to write a written invoice for C.T. for me to answer it, so.
Yep, okay, great. So, that'll probably hit next year, then? Likely.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're hoping, we're trying, maybe.
Yeah.
Begging.
I didn't, I didn't see the, um, because Ben, for the trees, for the new trees, the forty-nine trees?
They're in there.
No, but there was a separate part, there's, it was broken into two pieces, right? There's to buy the trees and then to install the trees. I didn't see the install the trees in here.
Well, they haven't been installed yet.
Actually, they have, I've been seeing them going on.
I think they're in the process of being installed.
I'm just saying, I don't see the payment.
I don't think they've been billed yet.
Maybe they'll build when they're, yeah.
Okay, well, I just, Kelly, from a, because we built, I mean, we built the money in for this year, remember, Bob, to, to pay for not only buying the trees but installing the trees? So, it was in the service department fund. So, it sounds like, it sounds like the bill itself for installing the trees may show up in next year's?
If we get it this year, it'll go in this year.
Okay.
We would have to vote to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, even though we haven't approved it yet, to pay it?
Now, we're talking about entering the bill or paying the bill, two different things, entering the bill and paying the bill.
Well, at this point, that bill's not gonna get paid till next year.
Right.
So, I'm just, I'm just thinking about from a budgeting standpoint, because we, Public Works also said for next year, we want you to build in, you know, the incremental that we had. But if this rolls over, the net makes next year's incremental ten thousand more, because the installation didn't happen this year the way they thought, they thought it was going to.
Well, we'll appropriate for the full amount, and then the carryover will be in addition to that.
Okay, so the carryover in terms of like, there's this open P.O. or something, or? Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure from a budget standpoint, there's enough built into Ben's budget to help pay for the fact that this didn't happen this year, it's gonna happen next year, so. The work's getting done now, but the billing's not gonna happen till next year. Okay.
All right, then, motion and a second to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Vanstone?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. York?
Aye.
All right, let's pay some bills. All right, uh, Randy, it looks like maybe you're up, huh?
Randy, Randy, Randy.
I'm gonna apologize upfront, this is a monster.
Randy, 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 Randy.
So, when I looked at this, what I thought I would do is I will read it in its entirety. There are seven actionable motions in this committee report and eleven resolutions. So, I'll go through it, and then maybe we can tack those, attack those actionable motions one at a time. So, the Health and Recreation Committee met on Friday, December ninth, and council chairs. Present at the meeting were Health and Recreation Committee members Randy York, Susan Brown Knight, and Matthew Ayer. Also in attendance were nineteen village residents, including representatives from the Merrimott Racket Sports Board, Merrimott Preservation Foundation, and the Merrimott Park Board. The meeting commenced at five thirty-five P.M. The purpose of the meeting was to review the twenty-twenty-four Merrimott Racket Club, uh, results, twenty-twenty-five Racket Club Sports Pro contract, twenty-twenty-five Racket, uh, Club rates, twenty-twenty-five Racket Club budget requests, Merrimott Park Board ordinance, Merrimott Park Board budget request for twenty-twenty-five, Merrimott Park Board request for membership training slash certification, Merrimott Park Board proposed appointments, and the Dogwood Park Plan revisions. The committee reviewed an updated plan from village engineer Chris Erdl to reduce the footprint of the parking lot at Dogwood Park while maintaining the handicap parking, drop-off area, and separate entrance and exit. The committee reviewed the footprint and usability of the existing parking lot and reviewed the current approved proposal compared with the updated proposal. The committee determined that to maintain adequate parking at the park and to maintain improved safety and accessibility, that the original approved plan would be recommended by the committee. Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Ayer moved.
I like that.
That we recommend that we stay with the original plan with twenty-one parking spaces. The motion was seconded by Ms. Brown Knight, and the motion passed unanimously. The committee then reviewed the Merrimott Racket Sports Report for twenty-twenty-four season, including finances, recommended rates, and the twenty-twenty-five Racket Sports Pro contract. These are up, uh, there are updated financials attached to this report. Mr. Ayer moved, we accept the proposed racket sports rate for the twenty-twenty-five season. The motion was seconded by Ms. Brown Knight, and the motion passed unanimously. Ms. Brown Knight then moved that, moved that we move forward with the racket sports pro contract for the twenty-twenty-five seizing, season pending the review and approval by Solicitor McTighe. Mr. Ayer seconded the motion, and the motion passed unanimously. The Merrimott Pickleball Committee presented a proposal to add additional pickleball courts to the racket sports facilities at Mary Emery Park. The Merrimott Racket Sports Board has approved the addition of pickleball court, courts at the facilities. The committee has contracted with Pickle Optics to execute comprehensive planning in a fundraising campaign to convert, expand Court Six to accommodate four pickleball courts by expanding east on the lower courts. The total estimated cost for this project is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and the pickleball committee has requested that the village approve forty-four thousand dollars from the general fund in twenty-twenty-five, and to approve the expansion of Court Six that will be totally funded by outside resources. Mr. Ayer moved that we recommend the, that we recommend the expansion of Court Six to add four pickleball courts contingent on a successful capital campaign to completely fund the project. The motion was seconded by Ms. Brown Knight, and the motion passed unanimously. Mr. Ayer then moved that we recommend an incremental thirty-five thousand dollars to be expended from the general fund for a total of forty-four thousand dollars for the repairs of Courts Five, Six, and Seven contingent on council priorities and available funds. The motion was seconded by Ms. Brown Knight, the motion passed unanimously. The total cost of the project would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, eighty-six thousand dollars in permanent improvements, and forty-four thousand in general fund court repairs. The committee, uh, then discussed desire to improve access and overall visibility to complete financial and usage data related to the Merrimott recreational facilities and programs. The committee is particularly interested in those facilities and programs that are subsidized by the village. The committee will work with the fiscal officer to develop a process and a template for this purpose. The committee reviewed a necessary update to the ordinance for the park advisory board. The updates were prompted by increased membership and a request for a process to be more transparent with park board activities. Ms. Brown Knight moved that we accept and implement the updated, uh, park board ordinance. Mr. Ayer seconded the motion, the motion passed unanimously. Solicitor McTighe will provide guidance to efficiently implement this update. The committee reviewed a budget proposal for one thousand dollars from the park board for twenty-twenty-five. Ms. Brown Knight moved that we approve the twenty-twenty-five funding request from the park band, park board. Mr. Ayer seconded the motion, and the motion passed unanimously. The committee then reviewed the ten residents who have expressed an interest in serving on the Merrimott Parks Board. The names were forwarded to the mayor in hopes that we could recommend these candidates to village council at the December sixteenth village council meeting, and resolutions could be prepared for their first reading at that meeting. The meeting adjourned at seven twenty P.M.
Read this, Randy.
So, what I thought I could do is, um, start with the motions, if that's agreeable to everyone, since there's so much here, unless anyone has any overall questions at this point?
I think, I think, well, I think the, we said for the tennis stuff, the repair and maintenance work, it's actually all incremental forty-four. Kelly and I touched base, and there wasn't.
Thank you.
There wasn't, there wasn't nine thousand built in this year for that, and so it's forty-four incremental, not thirty-five incremental, so.
Could you clarify, because when you were going, first going through the pickleball thing, I was wondering why the money wasn't gonna come from the permanent improvement fund? And then later, you said some of it was coming from the permanent improvement fund, and some of it is coming from the general fund? What percentage overall do you expect private funds to pay for that project?
It's about a two-thirds, one-third, one-third being the, uh, maintenance work and court repairs for five, six, and seven, and then the eighty-six thousand dollars worth of permanent improvement, that will be all for private resources. So, we just have to agree that we're okay with that. We don't have to allocate any permanent improvement monies towards.
Okay, that's a good clarification, so where you've got the eighty-six and permanent improvement, which obviously we just talked about, that's, that's in donations, not.
I mean, it is, it is a permanent improvement.
Not in my world.
Fun, but it's not a village fund permanent improvement.
Thank you, Randy.
It's the pool all over again.
Pool, it's a pool system.
Well, but the, the pools capital also did have village money, and this one's not gonna have village permanent improvement fund.
Right.
True.
Important clarification.
The pickleball, or the pickleball and the repairs don't have village money?
The repairs will have money, the repairs will be the village money. That's, that's the forty-four thousand, that's a general fund.
Okay.
So, that's why, that's why Randy breaks it out that way, it's like the eighty-six or whatever that is, is all capital for the expansion of the courts and stuff like that, moving the fence and everything else. And then the forty-four is just painting and cracked ceiling and stuff like that.
On the lower courts.
Well, and seven also, seven's where the backboard is, that's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, seven, so, Marcy, really, what, what this committee is asking is, is the approval of council to allow that group to go out and raise funds, private funds, and that we're okay with. The concept is okay, yep, we agree that we should, it would be a benefit to our residents to add pickleball courts, and if we've got private residents that are willing to go out and, and raise money for it, we're okay with it.
I have a couple of questions. One, if we approve the report, what, what's that mean about the general fund for next year? And the reason I say that is, at our last meeting, we put off buying some trees because we weren't sure about the status of the general fund. So, I want to make sure that we view this as strictly a recommendation and not the council's approving that expenditure out of the general fund.
If, if you read the motion, the motion says contingent upon council priorities and available funds, so that's, that's why.
Well, but I, I don't want it to come back later and say, oh, council approved this. I think it's, I want it to be very, very clear that we're, we accept their recommendation, which I think is a good idea, but next year, we have these unfunded mandates. In the back of my mind, I think we're gonna have to use, find some money for streets, because the matching is no longer ten percent, we're up to fifty percent. I think there's gonna be other priorities like trees and other things. I think there's going to be other priorities like trees and other things, and we need to just.
That's, and I, this was a, this was an in-depth discussion. And so I'm glad you brought it up because it was, it took a significant portion of the committee's time of, of how do we make, how do we allocate budget in a vacuum, right? That's essentially it, right? Oh, we like this project, so let's allocate it. Oh, we like this project, and, and there is a opportunity cost for every single thing we approve, which is why that, that language was very much thought out of contingent upon, and you'll notice the words, which you just used, priorities. So contingent upon council priorities and available funds.
Yeah.
Because that is exactly, Bob, that is exactly the.
Well, I understand that, but I want it so clear that we can't, somebody doesn't say, oh, you approved this last year, so we have to do it. Because I've been on the end of some of those kind of discussions.
So what would you propose changing?
What would the word be?
You recommend to council they consider $44,000 from the general fund.
Pending, I think that, to Susan's point, pending the other priorities and availability, right?
Yes, but it's a recommendation, we're not saying council's not approving that to the general fund tonight, that's all.
Okay, so, and so you just want to change the word, village approved 44,000 to village recommend 44,000 from the general fund?
Contingent.
Contingent upon, so.
Well, it does say recommend.
So we could, I can, if, if this is agreeable to everyone, we can change and say that, the motion to read that we recommend considering an incremental $44,000.
Actually, it does say recommend, Bob. Kelly's right, the very last paragraph, we recommend an incremental $35,000.
But I was reading the third paragraph at the bottom.
Well, but that's not what was.
Approved 44,000.
Right, right, but what, what was, what Matt, what's Matt's statement was that was actually voted on is the last paragraph.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's, it was definitely a big discussion of how do we manage all the priorities? So I think your comments are well put.
Yeah, because you're right, it wouldn't be fair for us in that meeting to say we want 44,000 when there's all the priorities coming into a funnel.
That's, that was my concern. Because I was, I was focused, maybe I didn't read the words in detail. I plead guilty, but I was reading that third paragraph that the village approved.
Hey Kelly, when's the, when's the good, when's the correct time for this group to come together to look at where things, I mean, is it April, May timeframe or what?
Oh, no, end of January.
Oh, that we'll know about the unfunded mandates?
Oh, that? It hasn't, I mean, it's on the floor.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm just saying, to Bob's point, we're starting to develop a parking lot of topics, right? 10,000 for trees, 44,000 for this, and they're all in a parking lot waiting to understand how much money do we have available?
Right.
And what all, and if there's anything else that comes up that needs to be on that list. And so when's the right time for us to come together and look at those two things? Fund availability and what's on the list.
It's such an unknown as to when we'll know. It's not going to be, I mean, they'd have to really move their you-know-whats to get that through in 2024. So they'll have to reintroduce the bill in 2025 if it doesn't pass the full. I don't see it going into effect in 2025.
So do we reconnect in like April or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. Wait, wait, I'd rather we have that conversation before the temporary appropriations expire.
When's that?
End of March.
Okay. So that's, I mean, maybe you just do it in March then, towards the end of March we reconnect and see where you stand.
Yeah, and then we'll do permanent appropriations.
And well, this is all, this is all general fund so far.
Yeah, but we still have to do that. I mean, when I say permanent, we do temporary appropriations to get us through the first three months, and if you can do it sooner, even better.
Yep.
So.
Okay. Sounds like that's the right time then, so. Towards the latter half.
I hope somebody has a move. No.
I, I had a couple of other questions, maybe. I, I was here, I was thinking about this last year. I would like, when we talk about our recreation facilities, the total cost of operating them come into play. That includes some estimate of the amount of maintenance, trash removal, anything else the service department does in their costs. We know how much, in the case this year of the, of the racket club, that would include the sidewalk. I'm just saying that here is the total cost to support that facility. And I, I don't want to single out the racket. I think we should do that for the pool and for the parks if that needs to be done. But I, somehow I, I would like to reflect that. I think some of that, the column has made you work with Kelly on that, but some of that's beyond Kelly maybe a little bit unless she's going to sign up for that activity.
At least with the, this, we, this was also part of the conversation. And, you know, because there is a, essentially, you have to, you have to cover now oftentimes, right, it's done through depreciation, which is, I think you can't do that here, right? So, so how do you, and depreciation can be folded into operating costs, and that's how you cover, you account for that specific expense year over year. And so in this instance, what we talked about was, okay, we know, you know, every five years there is X expenditure, so we need to allocate that annually. And I think we also had that same conversation with the pool so that we know the actual cost of operating it versus every five years it happens to be, you know, 200K. And so understanding what that is. So I think it really is the, it is those, those entities that need capital investment. But I think, I know the pool did it, right? That you're recognizing that every five year, or that there are certain capital costs that need to be allocated.
We have, we've done a lot of work to look at what the total cost is for, not just for the year, but looking forward what we can expect in the next five years. And, and we're working on that. As, as, I wouldn't call it quite a master plan, although that's, that's what we'd really like. Is to know what we're going to do in the next 25 years. We're not quite that sophisticated yet, but I, I think that, but that's something that we're working on from what we did last year where we got all the details and expectations for, because we fixed a ton of stuff last year. And then we're going to, so as far as the pool goes, I mean, I think we're going to, we're going to have that. And as far as the service department goes and the work they do at the pool, we have not traditionally included that. And it's not.
But that service department cost.
That's kind of diminished this past year anyway, service department. You know, they, they cut the grass and do a couple of other things, but there's not a lot of time.
Yeah, but I would also say that that's, allocation of a service department would be an unbelievably complex calculation. So I don't think you're thinking that.
That's why I said you want an estimate.
Right, so, but, and it's a fixed cost, right? So, so you have to pay those, the service department salaries regardless of the pool existing or not.
Plus UAN doesn't lie, everything that goes to the pool goes into UAN. It's all right there in black and white.
But, but we did have this conversation about making sure, because the tennis courts have a big expenditure. Is it every five years? Is that in my?
Well, when, when, when we put together the debt, we figured it was $38,000, $35,800 a year in permanent improvement.
I'd like to see that calculated.
For the, for the, for the tennis courts.
I'd like to see that calculated.
Well, you think it's higher or low?
The invoice that we prepared for MSD, that's not, because their, their percentage of use as it relates to permanent improvement was their, what we agreed to. And that, that number may be high because we, we caught up with a lot of them.
Yeah.
And where, I recall, maybe I'm mistaken, that you're putting the monies that MSD, the schools donated in a separate fund. Where is that relative to this 44K you're asking for other improvements? Are you using that for the, or the maintenance or, 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 or?
That, that was envisioned for, like, big projects, resurfacing. And so again, they resurfaced four courts last year, it cost $132,000. Last year, two years ago, two years ago. And the, the schools paid $25.2,000 out of $132,000. And that's where Randy got their commitment then, not only that one time kick it in, but then on a, because you got to resurface courts every 20 to 25 years. So that's what the money is for, is to set it aside.
I understand.
So that's what that's for.
But I'm saying in the, as we've talked about a bunch of numbers, and my question was, is somewhere in there the, the school money?
Yeah, I, I think you, the budget I saw at least, yes. So, but there is, again, when you, it's not typical accounting to fold in the capital cost. So that was what we talked about, is folding in allocation of capital costs every 20, 25 years, these mat, these very large expenditures, and how do we allocate them out over the years? And so, so then we can find out, same with the pool. How much are we subsidizing as a village, the tennis courts and the pool? And that, so that we just full, we know and we're transparent about it. Both, I think, are huge assets to this community and think people want to subsidize those two things. But to what degree, right? And so that's, I mean, that is absolute, I, I feel like we had that conversation. We did talk about it. And I don't know, the, the question really is where does that live? Where does that information live, I would say?
Somehow that should be reflected, in my opinion, in this report, that of this X dollars or the exact thing, we expect the, to take that from the school fund, this much money. And I didn't see that in the report. It may be in the sheet here that I'm not smart enough to figure out.
It, oh, go ahead.
No, I, well, again, I think, I think the things you were talking about, Bob, were in that top paragraph of the second page, right? About trying to get the financial, go beyond just the operating expense. What's the other cost that we need to try and capture? I think that's what, what the intent of the committee was.
And we've captured sewer usage and the cleaning and all of that. I think we tried to get a closer picture of what is it costing us to have that facility? So I think we got, but to your point, I don't have a number. It's 0.5% of maintenance. I have no idea what that number would be.
Okay.
I had.
But does that paragraph to Rob's question reflect what you're talking about?
It wasn't, it wasn't clear to me, let's put it that way.
So when it says, "The committee is particularly interested in those facilities and programs that are subsidized by the village. The committee will work with the fiscal officer to develop a process and template for this purpose."
But it did mention the schools particular. By the way, when you said MSD.
Let's see, why does the sewer district got?
Yeah, what's a, it's a school district.
I know, Randy.
Sewer district.
Come on, Randy.
Well, it didn't, it didn't mention fees or anything else either.
I understand.
Yeah, the visibility to complete financial and usage data relating to the Merrimott recreational facilities and programs.
Okay.
So I, but I think, again, I think, my point is that people share your concern. Like, let's all, it is not, I don't want to overstep, Kelly, you can correct me. It's not.
I'll correct you.
It's not standard accounting procedures to, to do these long-term, infuse them into operating. But, so we have to kind of do this on a sidebar.
Yes.
Yeah, so we actually know.
Where it's a cash-driven, it's a cash-based accounting system, so.
Okay.
We got a lot to get through tonight.
We do, but I got, I got, I'm sorry, I want to bring up. Because I wasn't at that last meeting, I'm talking about now the ordinance change for the park board. This does represent some substantial change within the structure of the park board, which, by the way, I, about 90% of it I see as being very positive. My only, well, I got a couple of issues with it. One, I really wasn't certain, Randy, in your outline here, Merrimott Park Board Ordinance Update, and then it says possibly refer to rules and law. I wasn't sure if that constituted sufficient notice to any resident who might have wished to be part of the discussion as to these changes. That's maybe just a minor point, I don't really want to harp on it too much because, I mean, it is, it is referenced there. My only other concern with this is, Randy, you and I have had our differences for sure, bud, but you're giving the mayor the heave ho here.
I, I will tell you, this was in dialogue with the park board just to have visibility so that it is, when things are done, they're discussed in this form so people know about it. And mayor, last year, a lot of stuff happened that none of us knew about. And, and I just think that, that given that we've got 13 residents now interested, that I think this increases visibility and public discourse on these things. And, and clearly, the intention is not to take any executive power away from you. It is all about visibility, and we just didn't have that in the past.
Well, it, maybe is a fair point, but the tree board operate, you know, all of these groups operate as advisory groups or committees, basically. And they, they are to make recommendations normally through, you know, the mayor or the pool manager or something like that, then on to council. And that seems like that's always worked. I do think though, the one point about this though, that there's another reason for possibly leaving the mayor in this, and we, it can be jointly, I mean, both of us can be mentioned. Because here's the deal, we, you're not going to be chairman of this committee forever. I'm not going to be mayor forever.
Right.
And going down the road, I just think that it's sort of a check and a balance to have both of us mentioned, that's all.
So if you've got language you're comfortable with.
Well, on, in section 37.03A7, I guess it is. Recommendation to the board shall be submitted to the Health and Recreation Committee who will present them to village council. It should basically just say, will be submitted to the mayor and the chair of.
Health and Rec.
I mean, that's what the old one says.
Yeah, yeah. What it says is that to the mayor who may.
Oh, who may, well, okay, may.
All right, so let's strengthen it, but just, let's add mayor.
I have no, I have no problem with that.
Did I ever refuse an accommodation?
Well, we don't know.
Guys.
What?
Okay, so then we'll need a motion.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
I'm totally good with that.
Okay.
Totally good with that. And I assume park board is totally good with that.
Okay.
I see a round over there.
I move, we update the ordinance to. To read, section seven, recommendations from the board shall be submitted to the mayor and the Health and Recreation Committee who will present them to village council.
Perfect.
All right.
There you go.
So do we have a second?
Second.
Did you, Miss, make a comment?
No, I was raising my hand.
Okay, Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brown Knight. Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Vanstone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye, thank you.
All right, we're all good.
And then the other change to this is, is we just took language from the tree board because they got voting members and non-voting members, and since there were so many people. That was the genesis for that.
No.
I thought the rules on an independent contractor were going to rules of law to get a clarification on that. I don't remember getting that back last year.
The, the rules on an independent contractor, I'm not sure.
Yeah, versus an employee.
Someone using village facilities for profit, for lack of a better word.
Well, there's been, there's been no discussion about that further discussion, you know, kind of a thing. I mean, I know it's a topic that still sort of lingers out there.
But wasn't it in rule law, we were looking for a reading?
My understanding is we reviewed this and we were well within all legal boundaries with what we were doing.
Because you just, you took last year's contract and just.
Changed dates.
Yeah.
That's all we did.
And Ed reviewed it last year.
Right, that's correct.
So there's no change, there's no change to the contract.
That's right, yeah, the mayor and I talked about it.
I'm going to make a comment that the idea that the village doesn't get a cut out of the tennis lessons when our facilities are being used, when we're asked as a taxpayer to help fund the tennis courts, that's a way to increase revenue if we could keep it within the tennis budget. Do we say 20% of the lessons go back to the village?
It's a high percent. Well, again, to your point, Bob, this is actually in Rules and Law Committee, so we're not, we shouldn't be trying to solve it here.
It, it is an incumbent?
Yes.
I feel like we just, I've got to look at mine. I feel like we discussed it at length at one point.
Need for policy regarding public property for private business purposes.
Well, son of a gun, Bob. I'll tackle it again. Or not, I don't know.
Do you have any idea when we will, your, your committee will, will take a position on that?
I need to talk to, Rod and I will get together, we'll figure out a time that our schedules align.
My, my only question is, do, if it's going to be quick, I would suggest we delay the approval of this contract till we get the ruling. But if you're telling me it's going to be a while, we just have to go forward.
Well, because, because it needs to apply to people who have camp, you know, soccer camps at the bell tower, right? It needs to apply to all of the public facilities.
Absolutely.
Because there's swim lessons at the tennis, at the, down to the swim pool. So it has to, it's not. has to, it's not, it's not an easy...
There's a lot.
It's not an easy nut to crack.
It's something worth looking at, but I don't think that we can hold this contract up this year, for sure, on, on that.
But I think we need to get to that, so it's, it's clear position.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, in the, in the, um, committee assignment, it does say, "Need for policy regarding using public property for private business purposes," so it isn't just tennis, it is...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's all of it.
There's other avenues.
Okay.
How much more do we need to approve on your report?
Is it, I think it's time to make a motion to approve his report.
Yes.
Now that it's quarter of it.
Second.
So, do, do we, do we have a motion in a second?
Yes, he did.
He did.
Mr. Heer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right.
What can come off?
Uh, oh, I, I, I'll, I'll look at that, and I'll say...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Randy, I think you're still up, right?
All right, I'll do my second one, okay, this is a little shorter, hopefully. Health and Recreation Committee met on Tuesday, December twelfth, in council chambers, president at the meeting, Health and Recreation Committee members Randy York, Chair Matthew Heer, also intendant for Mayor Bill Brown, MDF members Doug Zemke and Vif, but the meeting commenced at two oh-two P.M. Purpose of the meeting was to review bids for the Dogwood Park sidewalk at Pleasant Street, South Eighty Committee reporting budget request and park bench donation. Uh, the committee reviewed the eight bids that were received for the Dogwood Park sidewalk along Pleasant Avenue from Merrymont Avenue to Wooster Pike. The Dogwood Park sidewalk was awarded to Sorda Tiff grant that funds ninety percent of the total construction con- cost. Conditions of the grant include that the contract must be awarded in 2024, and that construction begins by the end of February 2025. The Sorda application included a, included a concrete sidewalk, and co- concrete must be used for the portion of the sidewalk that runs from the top lot down to Wooster Park be- because of grade. Engineer Erdl also confirmed that Sorda, with Sorda, that a sidewalk funded by Sorda should have a minimum useful life of twenty years, and aggregate therefore does not qualify. Uh, I've attached a memo from Village Engineer Erdl, listing the bids received, along with his recommendation, to award the contract to J.P. Tombland and Sons. Mr. Heer moved that we proceed with the concrete sidewalk at Dogwood Park, and to accept the bid from J.T. Tombland and Sons, and that we proceed with the resolution on an emergency basis in order to meet Sorda Tiff timelines. Mr. York seconded the motion, and the motion passed unanimously. Uh, the committee will work with the village office, engineer, and solicitor to prepare the necessary resolution to accept the bid, so that the resolution can be voted on in an emergency on the twelve-sixteen council meeting. The committee further recommends that the solicitor, fiscal officer, mayor review the contract and sign the agreement, so that the executed contract can be submitted to Sorda in advance of the twelve-thirty-one deadline. Uh, the committee reviewed a year-on-report from the South Eighty Committee, Mr. Heer moved that we approve the budget funding request from the South Eighty Committee for 2025, Mr. York seconded the motion, the motion passed unanimously. Uh, the committee also discussed park benches, and will work with Village Council to establish a consistent style-size specification for future park benches. Um, the meeting adjourned at two-twenty P.M.
All right, any, any discussion on this?
She wasn't there.
Yeah, I wasn't there.
I might have to sign with you. Have to find it.
So, the, the section along Pleasant Street has to be concrete, but what about the other sections?
That's not part of this.
This is only the side.
Okay, it's only that piece, I know, but the thing goes around.
True, yes. The, we had, we had established at a, with a committee report at whatever council meeting, that the loop trail would be aggregate from the bell tower back around to the parking lot, and that's the bid we're going on.
Okay.
Can we just use this one?
Right, Chris?
Thanks for clarifying. Okay, so, can you and Matt sign that, please?
Sorry, I don't know.
That's okay.
And that aggregate is, it's considered ADA approved, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Going to do it.
Any other questions, comments about?
Randy, we might, we may want to, I think we may want to take out one phrase in that report, that we don't actually have to have the contract signed by the end of the year, because I don't think we're going to do that until our next meeting in January...
That's correct.
From what I'm hearing.
Well, I'll defer to Chris, because in the application, it said you had one year.
One year. And the date they give in the application, I believe it's a typo, is twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I saw that today, I'd never seen that.
So, yeah, we have to put a shovel in the ground, I'm assuming February twentieth of twenty twenty-five, so, there's no contract sign date that I could find in the agreement.
So, I will tell you, if you are, my immediacy on this was because, based upon the original application we submitted, it said one year, I had assumed from the beginning it was, we had to do this in twenty twenty-five, so, twenty twenty-four, so if you're confident that we can get this and have it all done, and, and meet the deadlines and timelines, um, I'm, I'm okay with, with deferring that.
Good, thank you.
Well, but, I mean, we got to stay on it, right, the first part of the year.
January thirteenth, the meeting, yeah, I mean, it's on an emergency, we'll just keep it on an emergency, we'll just do it at the first meeting in January.
So, we can, at, at, with, to your point, with your amendment to this contract, committee report, just amend the committee report, keep the resolution, okay.
But we'll need to change the date on the resolution from December sixteenth to January twenty, January thirteenth.
One thirteen twenty-four, and that's the only change we need? Okay.
And then on the report, the report where it said that we have to have the contract signed by the end of the year, that, just scratch that.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I, I move that with the amendments, we accept the report.
You, you clear on the amendment? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Heer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
Okay, all right.
Okay, what comes off of this?
I, I will...
Well, let me, okay.
I think I just confused it last time I tried.
Okay.
Rob, you ready?
Yeah, sure. Okay, the Finance Committee met on Wednesday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, four P.M., to discuss the waste and recycling fee paid by residents of the village, president at the meeting were Finance Committee Chair Rob Bartlett, Finance Committee members Bob Van Stone and Marcy, Marcy Lewis, and Mayor Bill Brown. On December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, council is voting on accepting a fourteen percent increase on the fee that Rumkey charges the village for collecting waste and recycling. The increase would go into effect on January first, twenty twenty-five. The Finance Committee believes it is important that any increase in the waste and recycling fee paid by the residents of the village go through the normal three readings and not be passed as an emergency measure. As such, the earliest we could pass legislation would be the second council meeting in January twenty twenty-five, because that only gives us eleven months to collect the higher fee, the fee increase would need to be fifteen point three percent to equate to a fourteen percent over, to equate to forty percent over twelve months. For perspective, the current fee is nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents a month for a house, and fifteen dollars per month for an apartment. A fifteen point three percent increase would make the amounts twenty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents per month for a house, and seventeen dollars and thirty cents per month for an apartment. The fee will continue to be collected by Greater Cincinnati Waterworks and then passed on to the village. The committee voted unanimously to support increasing the fee charged to houses to twenty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents a month, and the fee charged to apartments to seventeen dollars and thirty cents a month. If council agrees with this recommendation, the fee increase needs to be passed via ordinance. The first reading of the ordinance is tonight, that way the voting will occur at the second council meeting in January, so the price increase will go into effect thirty days after that, or on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Respectfully submitted, Rob Bartlett, Marcy Lewis, Bob Van Stone.
Do you want to explain that the reason for the dollar increase amount is because it's overspread over eleven months instead of twelve?
Well, I thought I tried.
Did you try?
I was in there.
It was in there.
Well, I mean, everybody got it.
Yep.
Okay, all right, hey, just making sure.
Good, good, good.
Yeah, that's all. All right, you've heard the report, any questions? No? No?
Good job.
I move we accept the report.
Second.
Mr. Heer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right.
And this can come off the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, it looks like, uh, Marcy, you're up.
It's me or safety, in my package, I'll go, I don't care.
Well, no, you're right.
Did I skip one?
Yeah.
And thank you.
Because we got to save the best for the last.
Are we doing safety?
Yes, please.
I will try to make this quick, it's, it's, it looks longer than it is. Safety Committee met Thursday, December twelfth, present were members Matthew Heer, Rob Bartlett, and Randy York, Mayor Bill Brown, and Resident Kerry Mariucci. Um, first item that we addressed were the, were the pool rates for twenty twenty-five. Pool Commission, um, provided their recommendations for twenty twenty-five memberships and day passes, they reflect an average increase of approximately four and a half percent for memberships, no increases for day passes. The committee unanimously endorsed the proposed rates, committee recommends that council pass the conforming ordinance at its first meeting in twenty twenty-five on an emergency basis in order for the Pool Commission to commence its membership drive. And then there's a, there's a table that shows the, um, the new rates and the old rates for village residents, and for, uh, residents in the school district, but not in Merrymont, and then, um, the Pool Commission also reported positive results from its membership campaign in all categories, detailed financials are expected to be available in January, when we'll, um, just because, um, we're still getting some information from Allison, um, to, um, put together the whole financials for the pool from, from the twenty twenty-four season, and then if you, uh, then I'm kind of adding to the report, besides reading it, is, um, in the table, you'll see that we had an, kind of an overall increase of twenty-two percent in total memberships, that's a little bit skewed, because sixty-two percent of that increase was for individuals, whereas fifteen percent was, or thirteen percent was families, um, so, um, you won't see the revenue go up by as much as twenty-two percent, it's going to go up substantially, though, but the Pool Commission, to their tremendous credit, ran a very good membership campaign, using all sorts of different tools, emails, social media, um, personal contacts and everything, so they had a, a good membership drive, and I'm sorry, that was, uh, but beyond the report. Okay, next item. Um, Mr. Heer distributed a draft of the text for a flyer to be delivered door-to-door in advance of the open house, to be held at Merrymont Elementary School on January eighth, from six-thirty to eight P.M. The topic is optimizing the Miami Road six-leg street confluence and its local traffic patterns. The committee unanimously approved the flyer information, and recommended that the village authorize Choice One to conduct the open house, to prepare and present options, and seek and compile suggestions and comments. The cost for this engineering assistance is forty-nine hundred dollars, which would be formally authorized after January first. Mr. Bartlett recommended using the legislative, um...
Account.
Legislative account, I need to add a word in there that got, that's missing.
No, no, ours, not yours, you have a separate...
Okay, sorry. Um, I have a, yeah, okay, "Mr. Heer will work on getting the flyers produced and distributed by volunteers." Um, Mr. Heer, okay, um, next item, "Mr. Heer also described the opportunity for the village to apply to ODOT for a special active transportation bike-ped grant." It's all new grant program, and this is, we didn't make any determinations, it's just kind of information here. Applications are being received on a rolling basis, with reviews commencing January first, and April first, and so forth. For a small municipality, there is no local match required. The project must be ready for, um, construction by twenty twenty-six, as long as there's no right-of-way acquisition needed. Given these criteria, the committee recommended working toward a grant application submitted by April first, for completing the path from Miami Road across Plainville to connect to Murray Path. Um, Mr. Heer reported that Columbia Township fully supports this grant initiative. Next steps, will be meeting with Hamilton County Engineer in early January to discuss possible intersection improvements at Plainville, seeking concurrence with residents on a plan to optimize the Miami Road six-leg street confluence, updating construction cost estimates, and refining details associated with this grant opportunity. The committee unanimously supports pursuing these next steps for presentation to council. You want to stop and see if you have any questions on these items?
I just have a question, how do you define a small municipality?
Oh, it's a hundred thousand or less, or something like that, so Cincinnati can't, Cincinnati has a match, but...
It's by, it's by population.
Yeah, by population, and we're, we're small, small.
I'm thinking through the, can you, what is a six-leg confluence, are there six streets?
That's my fancy way of not writing Miami, Rambo...
Rambo, High, Arthur, Murray, Lidle Woods.
No, it's the bottom of the hill, when you come down the hill.
Yeah, I was counting in my head, I didn't count the six.
Yep, one, two, three, four, five, six.
We got to count the mayor's street, Lidle Woods.
It actually comes out there.
Okay.
And Murray.
Okay. Yeah, I counted five.
I don't, didn't count Haynes, because it, but it does get affect, impacted.
Okay, so it's a six-legged confluence, sorry.
Legged, not streets.
Legged.
Yes, yeah, I didn't call it intersection, because they come together and...
Yeah, they're very, very strange.
Everything offsets, so it's wacky, you know?
I'm impressed, you should like, you know, copyright that term.
So, importantly, I would like to add to this, nothing is decided, we're having the open house, Cho- Choice One will present options, pictures, ideas, the, um, particularly the residents who are, um, impacted in the cut-through area, um, on what I'll call Short Murray and the associated streets, they're, um, I'm expecting that they're going to kind of come to the meeting, I don't know if they'll have one voice, but they're all, um, working, working in contact with them to make sure that they look at everything and they know what's going on. Um, so the, um, but there's not a preferred option, they're going to look at everything and, uh, and see if we can't come up with what we think is best for Merrymont after everyone's input.
Would, would it be possible for Chris to put together a summary, or an estimate, of where the costs are on the, on the two Choice One, uh, proposals? Because they're both, the, the, they're both three-quarters of a million dollars.
Right.
And just, where, where are the costs, how much of it is narrowing Miami, how much of it is...
It's all in the Choice One report, did I say?
It's all broken down like that.
But it's not broken down by, here's where the percentage costs are of each of the two proposals.
It's not on its percentages, but they're all line items. Dollars. Dollars.
To make it so people don't have a, so people understand it. I'm asking, could Chris put together the percentages for the big thing so people can understand it better? Strictly a communication.
So take, take the dollars and turn it into percentages?
Yeah. But also saying, because curbing was separate from the street widening. The point is, is that's a same, that's all part of the same cost in reality. Could you do that?
Are we talking about doing visuals for the meeting? Or I'm not sure.
Choice One is already doing some of this stuff. They're the ones who are going to run the meeting.
But it, it needs to be condensed so people can understand it in English, not in.
That wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, I don't know what Choice One could do.
I could do that, but I think we're going to redo it with the open house. We're going to get more ideas. I think we agree that the $750,000 fixes are too high.
But I think the residents need to understand that and where the costs are. That's all I'm saying.
Right, right. So, but again, it's in the Choice One report. Chris has got a pretty full plate. It seems like Choice One could go ahead and do that as well.
Fine.
So I think, you know.
I was, all I want to do is have the citizens so they have a one chart that they can understand where is, how could this possibly cost this much?
Pie chart, bar chart, what would you like? We'll have.
Bar, oh, bar chart.
We've got the door.
Bar cart.
Not bar.
Wait, bar cart.
Pie chart.
Let's call the bar chart. Okay.
A Venn mode diagram, what?
I'm sorry, guys, can we kind of keep going here?
I think we should discuss the type of chart more.
It's a good idea, but we need to.
In the confluence.
Yes.
Six-legged confluence.
Stop sign requests. We get requests from residents for stop signs. One is at the Miami Mount Vernon intersection. This was from a few months ago. Merrimont Police Department has completed traffic counts. The data is being sent to Engineer Erdl for analysis and comparison to the Ohio Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And we'll wait to see what recommendation Chris has and when he follows the manual. And this is, has to do with a stop sign request that we have from a resident where Mount Vernon intersects with Miami. They'd like to have an additional stop sign or two there. And now that we have the data, it can go to Chris and he can plug it into the manual. So it's kind of, that's ongoing, really an update. Miami West Street intersection. After discussion, the committee recommended painting the curb, no parking yellow for 20 feet on Miami at the corner of West Street to improve visibility. The reason for that is parking in front of the condos. And I put a little map on the report. You can see where it is, although you can't see the yellow highlighted part where the marking would go. But we're just going to paint 20 feet. No parking so that when you're coming out of West Street and you're looking left and right, or looking left on Miami, that you can see whether cars are coming or not. And then also repainting the crosswalks across Miami and West Street as soon as practicable. There's, you can barely see that there is anything there. We're way behind on painting those crosswalks, probably some others. Next intersection, the Miami Road Bank Place intersection. And importantly, this item was not on the meeting agenda. We talked about it because we kind of need to straighten out which all intersections we were talking about where. So our general discussion suggested looking at restricting parking on Miami near Bank and repainting the crosswalk. It's definitely a case of the crosswalk needs repainting. And so this topic will be added to the next meeting's agenda by which time the committee, mayor, engineer, and Merrimont Police Department will have an opportunity to observe current conditions. Regarding a more general topic of adding stop signs in the village, Mr. York requested that the committee seek guidance from Solicitor McTie as to the necessary qualifications of a professional engineer to perform an engineering study as described in the manual. Mr. Air agreed to obtain his opinion. So, and we're going to just work with Ed to make sure we understand when we need to get an engineering study and when it needs to be something more than what Chris might do. And I don't know that we're going to have something black and white. You know how this stuff goes. But to just make sure that we're following the manual, which we're required to do by law. Old Town Parking Lot Lighting. This is really just an update. I've looked at it at night a couple of times. Met with Cincinnati Waldorf School, and I've also contacted Bill Decamp of Bulbs Depot to provide his recommendation. My first impression is the lot is adequately lit with existing streetlights and the supplemental lights added on the side of Waldorf School, except for the rear corner back by the cemetery, which is completely unlit. Waldorf School also suggested supplemental lighting in that particular area, although they are overall satisfied with the present lighting. Mr. Air reported that he will have more information after meeting with Mr. Decamp. Mr. Bartlett confirmed that there is a 20K placeholder in the 2025 permanent improvement budget for lighting, which is now 10K and included the sign. Okay. Crosswalk signage at Worcester-Madisonville Road Crosswalk. Mr. York reported that the crosswalk light is out of sync and that the walk light is still on when the traffic light for westbound drivers turns green. The committee, the committee requests that Engineer Erdl request ODOT to inspect and synchronize the light sequence. A resident has requested that the village disallow turning right on red on westbound Worcester at this intersection. The committee requests that Engineer Erdl contact ODOT and learn what options the village has with respect to further restricting this right turn. Keep in mind that this is state highway and ODOT has a lot to say in this. Mrs. Mattiucci asked if ODOT could also look at syncing of the crosswalk across Worcester at the corner by the end to make it possible to cross all of Worcester within one light sequence. The committee requests Engineer Erdl to ask ODOT about this crosswalk timing when they visit for the Madisonville Road intersection inspection. Getting close to the end here. General safety concerns. Safety Committee has received an additional request to review possible traffic calming and crosswalk safety measures. Mr. Air reported that the ODOT HSIP Systemic Safety Grant Program could fund improvements such as impavement lighting, like they have in Montgomery, or other crosswalk improvements. Mr. York noted that Montgomery also has converted sidewalks to red pavers that really stand out. Thinking in terms of systemic safety, Mr. Air asked, do we have too many crosswalks? I'll talk this over with Chief a little bit. Are there design improvements we can make? There are so many signs and crosswalks as you drive through the square. A driver may tend to be overloaded with signs and crossings. The committee unanimously recommended that Mr. Air work with Mr. Erdl on a scope of work and request for bid for a pedestrian safety study of the square and to continue to investigate the systemic safety grant opportunity. Again, this is just information, and to get more information, just to see if there's something that we should look at. Finally, the WRIG Opportunity for Murray Path Hydration Station. In 2024, Merrimont obtained a Waste Reduction Innovation Grant from a Hamilton County resource to purchase and install a bottle filling station at the pool. Mr. Air recently asked the grant coordinator if she thought a grant proposal for a hydration station on Murray Path would be viewed favorably. She encouraged Merrimont to submit an application. Mr. Air met with Columbia Township's administrator and trustee and asked if Columbia Township would split the 25% local match for this amenity. If Merrimont administered the grant and they gladly agreed, the committee unanimously recommended that Mr. Air proceed with obtaining cost estimates for the project and obtain council approval to apply for this grant. With complete cost information, the committee would prepare a resolution for council. Meeting adjourned to 4:20 p.m.
All right, you've heard the report. Any comments?
So the action step coming out of this is applying for the grant. Is there any other, and then all the stuff you dumped on Chris's lap?
That's called job security.
And then, and then just trying to make sure we got the action steps. The fees for the school, the pool.
Yes, and hopefully Joanie can prepare a resolution for January for, with the pool rates? Or I guess it's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance.
Yep. If everybody's okay with the pool rates and bumping those up, yep.
Is there a rationale for the four and a half percent?
Just general inflationary pressure. And there was concern expressed by one of our pool commission members. It's like, you know, I hate to see us just keep raising the rates all the time. Some families might not be able to afford this. And it is important to note that, you know, if we have a family with financial needs, that they can make a confidential request to the mayor and work something out.
And occasionally those are paid.
And we do publicize that in, when the information goes out. But that's the reason, just general inflationary pressure.
So again, you're asking for us to approve the, because I sort of like how Randy did this before. We're just taking step by step. So we got the rates for the pool. You're asking for $4,900 to pay for this, for Choice One to help run the open house of the intersection?
Well, they're going to do, I mean, more than run it. They're going to be doing part of the study work, correct?
Well, I, but I, yeah, but I think, you tell me what the, it's engineering assistance is what it's called.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, they're going to put together all the options. They're going to put together multiple options and have the visuals, have a couple engineers there, have comment cards, and then compile all the results for us.
And when is that meeting again?
January 8th, Wednesday, I believe.
So when you want that, we should, we said we should go into Legislative Department because it's not engineering design work or anything else like that. It's just really pulling together a lot of this stuff. So that would need to be built into the budget.
He knows the process.
Yeah, he's learning.
Does he?
Right, and Choice One is good with not seeing any purchase order till next year.
Oh, Rod, wait for me.
The next action, action step you're specifying for is about the painted yellow on Miami and the crosswalk on Miami West?
Yes, yep. And the crosswalk is really maintenance. And I have a feeling that if Ben goes around, he's going to find other crosswalks that similarly need painting, and we just need to catch up on that.
You notice they did do the crosswalk at the path on Miami the other day.
So, yes, we're asking for that. It's the okay to paint 20 feet of curb yellow.
Chief, a quick question on that. Is it 20 or 25 feet? What's the ordinance say?
I believe it's 20.
20?
I would have to look at it and make sure.
Next to an intersection, it's real unclear.
Yeah.
Because there's no stop sign there. It's just an intersection.
Yeah.
So it's really.
And there's no paint there now?
I think 20, 20 would be.
I think 20, I think 20 will work, just looking at it.
So you're asking for that, you gave Chris a whole bunch of follow-ups. And then what else?
A lot of which are, go together. I mean, talking about about three different things.
And then you're also asking us to approve applying for a grant for this hydration station along Murray Path where the 25% local match would be split between us and Columbia Township?
Correct.
Okay.
But that'll be, I'll come back to council in January when I have costs and then ask again. As long as council, at this point, if council can approve, just going forward with doing the investigation and then coming back so that we can come back to council without having to have another safety committee meeting to do that.
Move a motion in a second?
I move that we accept the report.
Second.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Marcy Lewis.
Aye.
I guess we have Dr. Stephen Lewis with us. I didn't want any confusion. Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right.
Good work.
Matt, what can come off your?
What was the question?
What comes off?
Have a good one, Chris.
Why don't you just follow up like Randy does?
Thank you, Chris, thank you.
I'll send you an email. Moving on.
Moving on.
My turn?
Well, we're, we're to you.
I know.
Yeah, sorry.
Mine is much shorter.
Thank you.
On Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, the Economic Development Planning and Zoning Committee met in order to hear the presentation and review the final economic development strategy from envisioned. Present at the meeting were Committee Chairperson Marcy Lewis, Vice Chairperson Bob Van Stone, member Susan Brownite, Mayor Bill Brown, Councilman Randy York, and Rob Bartlett as observers, Ama Lisniansky, MPF President Biff Black, MPF, oh, God, I've got, I've got a, I've got a typo in there, and several other Merrimont residents. Committee members were given a copy of the report in advance of the meeting and given the chance to make suggestions which were then incorporated into the report. Bob made a couple suggestions that he incorporated as far as explaining the annexation limitations. Ama Lisniansky and Mr. Hudson presented the executive summary in a discussion. Ama explained that Ohio is a home rule state and does not require municipalities to prepare economic developments, plans, or strategies. Some communities choose to adopt an economic development strategy, but many do not, and instead consider it as a reference document for administrative staff use rather than a formal policy. Adoption is at the sole discretion of the municipality. The committee voted unanimously to accept the report as presented. No motion was made to recommend council formally adopt the report. As Rob discussed earlier, we did discuss having Ama come down and having a second presentation for those who weren't able. And I think that'd be great because of Susan's schedule and the limitations for the bill and having to pay that, we had to kind of cram that in there. And I'd like to do it a little more in advance so that people could come. And I prefer to do that as a special meeting of council rather than trying to tack that onto council. So.
You want to do that as committee of the whole?
I don't, is that necessary?
Okay, it could just be.
You mean a committee, the whole meeting as opposed to a special meeting of council?
It could just be a special meeting.
Whatever.
Especially in the council, I think.
I just want to give people plenty of, you know, they'll probably occur mid to later January just to give people plenty of time to see it and if they want to come or if they've read the report that's on the website to have questions prepared. So, anyway, respectfully submitted, me, Susan, and Bob.
Do you have to sign the report?
I do not yet. I will sign it once it's approved.
Okay, you guys have heard the report. Any additional questions regarding this? I think the big question is when Ama comes back, you know?
I'm not sure what we're approving. It says here, no motion was made to recommend council formally adopt the report. So council's not formally adopting the report with this?
No, you're just, you're just acknowledging that we agreed, that the committee agreed to adopt the report. I mean, to, to accept the report. That's the agreement.
So what if, because I still have some trouble with some of the financial data that's in there. And I know it came directly from Mars, but I think a lot of this, variously, I heard from a lot of residents that thought we were in big, 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 big trouble. So I would like, and I think Rob brought this up at one point, for us that before that gets posted anywhere or anything, I'd like, I think it behooves us to massage that a little.
It is already posted.
I know, but that's, that's where the heartburn's coming from.
Well, I haven't heard any, any comments like that.
As I look at those charts.
Well, guys, I really, I'm not sure this is the time or the place to get into that discussion. We are going to have, we'll have, we'll have a meal here. We'll have more than ample opportunity to really get into a more in-depth discussion of this.
Randy, you paid the committee, he had to accept the report.
It would, it would be my hope that ultimately at some point, I mean, council would vote to accept this.
Yeah.
That there would be, you know, we would talk through issues. And, I mean, there's two sides here, and we can come to something. And a lot of time, a lot of money has been spent on this. Personally, I think it's a good report, and I would like to see us all ultimately agree to that. And I do think that bringing Ama here is a gigantic step in accomplishing that.
Yeah, I agree, Bill, and I think it would be, so I think that I, we should have that vote across council. I also think it would be great to have, because I, there's a lot of great ideas in here, and I think it would be good for us to sort of say, so what, what do we want to pursue? Because there's, you know, what would make sense and what doesn't make sense to do because he's got some really good ideas.
Exactly.
I'd love to hear his thoughts about what makes more sense for a community our size to go after.
Yeah, and there's some immediate things, immediate follow-up things that we've been discussing that we're currently already working on, you know, like the CRA follow-up down in the industrial district. That's, that's almost number one top priority right now.
And I, and I think you recommended putting this, the square into the CRA, but I think that's already in the CRA.
Is it, or it's just a theater?
Now, if you go along the streets, remember I sent you that one thing where I followed the description?
But that's a residential CRA.
Well, no, it was used for the, it was used for the.
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
But, but it's still, if you go to the legislation, that's a residential CRA.
We have our CRA expert sitting right in the back here. Do you have commentary on this, please?
No.
Well, because it has, it has in that document, so the document creates a CRA, and it says, it has commercial in there as well, right? It's got residential and commercial, both within that one CRA document.
You know, Rob, just, there's one problem with that in that, and I am going to say to mention it right here. In order for that to have been a commercial CRA, you would have had to have had that tax determination council. What's it called, Rod?
Tax incentive review.
The tax incentive review committee. We don't have that yet. I'm putting, I'm trying to put that together now.
Yeah, that's the one with the Hamilton County Commissioners and.
Might have been a stumbling block there.
Yep.
Might have been the intention, but, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we need to get that, yeah.
We need to get that, absolutely.
Phil, I'm happy to work on that with you, since Rod obviously doesn't want it.
Rod has been very helpful to me on this, yes.
He's so glad he can't see me right now.
Pursuing that, yeah. All right, so.
To accept the report.
Yeah.
We, we accept the report, right?
Well, let's have a motion in a second.
I have a comment on the report.
Yes.
I think we should thank all these residents and staff people and Marcy and everybody who, you know, put all this together and came to four meetings. And, and I, and I think the report does a good job in kind of eliminating some things that we, that we won't be looking at in the future so that when residents come back to us and they say, you can't ask us for, you know, additional tax levy, instead you should be doing this and this and that. And we, you know, this committee went through and they just, and, you know, they went around the village and looked at every undeveloped property that, of any consequence, that, okay, can we do this, do this, do this? Got all the residents spending. So I just commend the committee for doing, for putting the report together and for the, for all the volunteers who participated in it.
We had, we really did have a lot of good volunteers work on this at various stages, you know, over the interim, two years practically that we've been doing it. I know it's too long, but.
Well, we had some really good results come out of it. We've got a $100,000 grant we're implementing now and a brand-new business in our vacant. You know, that's to me the big success. And I think also having a definitive answer about some of the questions that have been hanging out there for years.
Yeah.
And having data to back that up.
All right.
Asked and answered.
All right.
Report.
Any additional questions?
So Marcy said January, you think might be a good time to bring?
Yeah, I'll try to do it, you know, expediently.
But not January 6th?
8th.
No, 6th.
Oh, yeah, not her birthday.
Not her birthday. Not her birthday.
I won't be here anyway.
And not on January 8th to conflict with Matt's?
Right, yeah. I move that we accept the report and, and with the understanding that Ama will be making a presentation to all of council at a time to be determined.
And then to Bill's point, then council would also then formally accept the report.
Well, I mean.
If there's any changes or questions or things like that.
They may or may not.
They may or may not.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my hope.
Yeah, we can all talk through it, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all right, Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lucid.
Aye.
Lucy. Dr. Lucid.
Dr. Lucid?
I'm actually being very lucid. Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right.
Resolutions.
All right, and miscellaneous, I already talked about leaf season, you know, running through the end of the month, village offices, well, everybody knows we've already moved. The renovations are well underway back there, it's quite the mess. But, you know, we are making good headway, we're really staying pretty much on budget. So I think everything is kind of coming together. It should, it should look nice. And I do want to thank Rod, he's been tremendously helpful in this.
Here, here.
Here, here, sitting back there all quiet. Village offices will be closed Wednesday and Thursday, December the 25th, 26th, in observation of Christmas, and we will be closed Wednesday, January the 1st, in observation of New Year's Day. All right, moving on to resolutions.
And this is the third reading to accept bid of Rumpke of Ohio for collection and disposal of solid waste, yard waste and recyclables to authorize contract and pay for services.
All right, that was the third reading, a motion in a second to accept.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right.
All right, this is the second reading to update rates for the, for the purpose of enforcing codes applicable to the Village of Marymont.
All right, that was the second reading. Everybody understand what this is? Any commentary, any remarks?
Good, good, good.
Excellent, they are doing a really good job. Okay, we will have the third reading in first of the year.
Okay, this is the first reading. I put a new one out. Evidently, this is a two-year appointment. I had it as a one-year, so.
No, everybody.
We're reading this as the two-year, okay? And I'll make the change on the agenda. This is the first reading to appoint Carrie, is it Malafa?
Sure.
As a member of the Marymont Racket Club Board for the calendar years 2025 and 2026. Okay?
All right, that was the first reading, we'll have the second reading.
And in addition to that, I was made aware that Ken Beech's term is also for two years. We passed that resolution at the last meeting. I'm just asking that we can amend that resolution to include the two-year term.
I move that we amend the resolution to include the two-year term.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call.
All right, Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
I'll fix it. Okay. Dang. Moving on, this is a first reading. Are we doing?
Are we?
We're tabling this.
Yeah, we'll just do it on emergency.
And first of the year.
Okay.
First, first meeting.
So we should, so we should move in table, move in second to table.
So move, second.
I mean, you understand.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I mean, you could always say have the first reading and have the next two at the next meeting, too.
Can you do that?
Yeah, we've done that in the past.
Yeah, we're in.
Why just do?
We've had the first reading, then at the next meeting, you have the second and the third reading.
That's right.
Or we do all three in one meeting.
Either one, you can do either one.
Please.
Kelly wants the second.
I want it all in.
So I'm good. You've already moved to the second.
Okay, so, okay, we move to the second. Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis. Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
Okay, ordinances, this is the second reading to amend sections 151.005, 151.025, 151.060, and 151.085 relating to accessory buildings.
Okay, this is the accessory building one, I think there's been, there was a lot of work that went into this.